Call the order of the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, August 2, 2017, and ask Commissioner Ruland to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Just join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city planner, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Ruland.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Smith. Thank you.
We have no special orders of business tonight. We do have item five on our agenda, which is the minutes from the study session of July 19, 2017. Do we have any changes or a motion to approve?
For the study session, correct.
Mm-hmm.
If there are no changes, I move we approve.
Do I have a second? Motion by Commissioner Ruland, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Pass.
Oh, that's right. You are not a president. Six passes, six zero one. Okay, item five B, minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of July 19, 2017. Are there any changes or is there a motion to approve?
I have one change.
Okay.
I'm looking in the establishment of the speed limit on Avenida La Pata. There's, I think it's the one, two, three, four, five, six guideline or six bullet point on here. It says advisement that official regulations slash guidelines state that streets, continuing on. I think there is a very big legal difference between regulations and guidelines, and I'd like that noted in the minutes, that a regulation is a regulation and a guideline is a guideline. I don't know if there's a better way for that, Mel. But they're totally different.
They are different. There's no technical definition. I think that can be noted, but there's no, there's no clear way to say that, I don't think.
Give us words or what? Are you okay?
I would remove the regulation because it's not a regulation. It would be a guideline. And that was what Commissioner Wu was discussing, was the guidelines he read from, was the guidelines.
Manual for control, manual control for traffic uniform devices, I think, was a different, different thing than the actual parking thing, I believe.
Well, this was the different alignment.
Right.
That was.
The document it came from, I think, is.
The guideline.
Okay.
I also have a revision I'd like to make to item seven A about the speed cushion. In the discussion included add one item to say recommendation to build the south portion of the Loop Road only.
Where specific is this contained in the minutes, please? Commissioner Wu.
Toward the end of it, there were, there are many discussions, bullet points, and that, that alternative, as I recommended, was not in the minute.
You want to add a bullet point then?
I want to add a bullet point to say, recommend to, to have the speed cushions on the south portion, on the south half of the Loop Road.
The second bullet point on page four, so should I change that? The lower portion, I should change to the south portion?
No, the second bullet point is, says push traffic to other streets, and that's, that's a separate issue.
Just on page four?
On page four.
Second bullet point on page four, that's okay. It says in the lower portion of the street, that's a support move in that area is much higher, or should I change it to the south?
Or just add to the lower portion only, and that's all.
Lower portion only.
Okay. So could you? Add the word only?
Yeah. Where, what exactly is the change that you're asking for?
It is on page four. Page four, second bullet item on top, from top, second line, to eliminate school-related traffic, suggestion to install speed cushions in the lower portion of the street only.
He was trying to make the point back then of only one half of the circle. That's a question on there. That's a question.
We didn't approve it.
No, it's just a.
Recommendation.
That's correct.
And I also have one on that same item. So the suggestion to consider installing street signage such as restricted turning, it was, the suggestion was signage, right turn from Caí Salta Montes to Richelieu, I believe, a right turn.
Okay, so the second bullet again.
Yeah.
So what's, what's the text that you want?
Well, that's, it was specific to right turn, that was the discussion, but if it's, and that's what we talked about.
So do you want to make a change to it or are you, are you going to, what's your comp?
Well, what's, you know, what's the, what's the feeling here? Are we wanting to keep it broad or do we want to keep it specific to what we discussed?
I'm comfortable with the way it's written, fairly broad, but, you know, we used to have very specific notes, but we've gone more general recently based on BBK recommendations. But if you want something in the minutes, we'll put it in.
We were concerned about the through traffic on Richelieu, cutting through traffic, and so that right turn was key on that street from Salta Montes.
So what wording would you like to have in the second?
So we would say, suggest to consider installing street signage such as restricted right turns during, right turn from Caí Salta Montes to Richelieu during the heaviest traffic hours to eliminate, and so on.
And Secretary, do you have that? Okay. Any other changes to the minutes? Were those all entertain and motion to approve with changes?
Second.
Okay, I move by, motion by Commissioner Tally, second by Commissioner Ruland, to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Okay, oral and written communication, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and make a presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close oral. There are nothing on our consent calendar tonight, and with that, we'll move to public hearings. Item eight, the public hearing process includes a staff presentation and a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following the closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issue, and act upon the matter by motion. Item eight A, 100 Avenida Rosa, cultural heritage permit sixteen, four, 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 Rosa duplex.
Good evening, everyone. Amber Gregg, city planner. I'm going to be presenting this on behalf of David Correa, who is the staff planner who wrote the staff report, but after a year being employed with us, David finally took his first vacation, so he's on vacation this week, so. As Chair Brown said, this is the Rosa duplex. It's located at 100 Avenida Rosa, and the reason that it's 100 Avenida Rosa is because it's vacant, but it's basically the third lot from the intersection of Ola Vista and Avenida Rosa, and that address will be updated, but just to kind of help better orient everyone. So you can see that here as on the location map of where exactly that is. It is a vacant lot, and it is surrounded by development all around it, has single stories right to, adjacent to them on the left and right-hand sides, a two-story to the rear, and two stories in front of the development. So here's a picture of the vacant lot as it currently stands. As you can see, you have the one stories on, on either side. It should be noted that the project was originally scheduled to go to the July 19 Planning Commission meeting, but there was an error on the agenda, so we continued it until tonight. So the lot is 4,277 square feet. That's a typical sized lot for this area of town. The zoning is RM. It's located in the architectural overlay as well as the coastal zone. And for developments that are located within an architectural overlay, the Spanish colonial style is required, and this project is proposing that. So here's a proposed site plan. On the right of the picture, you can see that that's the front of the home along the street, or I should say the duplex, and the driveway takes access from there and leads to a du, or to tandem parking for the development, and then you have the setbacks around it. The project does comply with the development standards in regards for all, all development standards, but particularly height, meets all the required setbacks, is under maximum lot coverage. It does provide the required parking as well as the landscaping. So here's an example of the front elevation. In addition to the PowerPoint, there are pictures on the wall that the architect, Mr. Luna, has put up for your reference, but as you can see in the elevation here, it's a Spanish colonial style building, has a smooth white stucco finish, red tile roof, single barrel, and architectural details that included wrought iron railings as well as wood garage doors and decorative lighting. Here are the side elevations. Again, large plain areas, or flat plain areas, I should say, with vertical oriented windows, smooth white stucco. This is the back of the building, and here's the opposite side elevation. So based on the findings, staff does believe that the project can meet all the findings that are prescribed for this application, and with that, staff recommends approval of the project. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have questions of staff at this time? Mr. Smith?
Yes, I do. Cultural heritage permit as it relates to the architectural guidelines, where does that fit in the stridations of being most specific to the San Clemente guideline? Is it the same as we would have to do for an historical building, or is it a little bit less? Where does that fall in line? Is this the most stringent architectural guideline that we have?
So the guideline is in regards to the, the type of architecture.
Yes, yes.
As well as the massing.
Is this guideline or more strict guideline for buildings in San Clemente?
No, the guideline applies to all developments in San Clemente. If we're talking about historic buildings, those have their own guidelines.
Yeah, but this, this cultural means that it has to comply with the Spanish colonial design.
That's correct.
And I was just wondering if there's any higher design guideline than that we have for that other than historical remodels? That's the highest up we have.
That's the only prescribed architecture that we have, but we do require that any architecture proposed be a high quality of architecture.
Okay, we also have another project here, but it's asking for an architectural permit. That is going to be a little less stringent, is that, would that be fair to say?
So the reason for the cultural heritage permit is because it's in the architectural overlay and requires Spanish colonial revival. If you're outside of the architectural overlay, but you have a new development, you're required to get what's called an architectural permit.
Right.
Where we look at the architecture, and one of the findings is that it's a high-quality architectural style.
Yeah, but not, not so much the old handsome style.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, just wanted to check on that.
Commissioner Wu, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a simple thing to clarify. During the design review meeting about landscape requirement, we were told that forty-five percent of front yard setbacks shall be permeable. On the staff report today, it's, it's a little different. It says area other than driveways or walkways shall be covered with drought tolerant plans. And I think this is consistent from what I found on the zoning ordinance. Is it just a clerical error and we corrected here, or, or we changed the criteria?
No, I believe the zoning ordinance refers to fifty and forty-five percent landscaping in the RL zone, residential single family, where this is an RM zone.
Right.
And for any other zone besides RL, it's all areas that are not required for driveway and walkways need to be landscaped, but there's no minimum prescribed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Would that, would the applicant like to step forward and make a presentation?
And while the applicant comes up, I just want to make a note that on the dius this evening, the staff did receive an email, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, and that's been placed on the dius as well as it was forwarded to all planning commissioners on the day we received it.
Except for this project, I'll throw him down. That's Chris Crowe, he wants to talk tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, city staff and city council. Legal counsel, I should say. My name is Michael Luna. I am the architect for the project and owner's representative. Welcome once again to the small downtown, typically forty by one hundred. We actually have maybe two hundred extra square feet to work with on this one, so it's like, yay, we get a little bit more space. But indeed, these small lots are indeed a challenge to, to design something in there that meets all the objectives, and of course, one of the most stringent development criteria is the maximum of fifty-five percent lot coverage. That really dictates, and is very restrictive in terms of what we can and cannot do with these, these small lots. Nonetheless, our project indeed conforms to all of the development criteria, height, setbacks, et cetera. Tandem parking is the only option available on these small downtown lots, and so we, we've incorporated that. The project does intend, we understand clearly, this is part of the downtown architectural goal, if you will, a part of the overlay, and as such, our project proposes indeed all of the standard city required and sought after, smooth missioned finish, stucco, true two-piece clay tile roofing, quality windows and doors, and things of that nature. So it is our indeed to have this hopefully blend harmoniously with the downtown architectural goals. We have reviewed the conditions of approval. They look appropriate, they're very standard, and I don't, I don't think there's been really any special conditions or anything that looks out of the ordinary. They look appropriate for the project, and I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant representative?
Yeah, I just, and this may just be something with perspective that I'm seeing, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you can certainly feel free to correct me on this, but I know, I know you're, we liked on, on the SCRs, you know, to make it look like the, the upper floor is a little bit shorter than the lower floor, and it kind of looks like that from the side, and I think you've got, you know, ten feet on the bottom and nine feet on the top, but from this perspective, it doesn't, you know, it, it looks either a little more even or even a little shorter on that first floor. So I was wondering if you could address that, and if it's just an artifact of the drawings.
Unfortunately, and really, this happens on every project that, that we process through the city. Somehow or another, the PDF gets distorted and elongated, so the, the image that you're looking at on the screen is really not accurate of, in terms of the proportions of the project. So I'd point to the, to the color rendering that I brought tonight, which really shows how more vertically oriented is, rather, the project is on the front elevation as opposed to the computer image. So indeed, yes, we have taller plate on the first floor. Perhaps what we're looking at on the, in this particular case is that we have some, a French door that opens out to a balcony net, so that's a pretty taller opening, but I think that the proportions are such that perhaps the garage doors could be raised a little bit, if, if that's an option or consideration or concern. That certainly could be done. We could raise that up a little bit to give the appearance of a little more vertical, Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. Okay. Is this very similar to the three or four designs that you did over on Granada, the block behind it, down to the.
They really are very, it is very similar, and really, we found that the best formula for these lots in the downtown, that there's really just very limited options when you have to consider tandem parking, the fifty-five percent maximum lot coverage ratio, and when you try to then create two meaningful entrances for the project, it gives us an opportunity to create a nice entrance, and I think that's really important for this solution, is that we can have a very, two very prominent entrances perceived on the front elevation, whereas the one on the left is a courtyard entrance, and the one on the right is a more direct entrance to the front unit. So the left unit being a courtyard entry that you flow along to get to the front door further down past the garages, and again, there's no choice other than to do that, but we have a greater setback along that side. Code requires eight feet along that setback in order to get back to that entrance. So we try to play up the entrance for, for that, but we find that this formula is giving us two feelings of entrance, some reasonable score footage, the tandem parking, rooftop decks. So this, this particular formula, we've been upgrading and kind of hybridating it as we move to various duplex projects that we've been working on.
Commissioner Wu.
Yes, since you mentioned that driveway, I'd like to compliment your twenty-two feet setback, because a lot of time when we have a curb cut, and then we ask the sidewalk to, to be up around a curb cut, if the garage door is set back by required nineteen, eighteen feet, then suddenly the, the parking on the driveway will overhang over the sidewalk.
Correct.
By doing that, the design makes sure that those driveways are big enough for someone to park there without interfering with the, with the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, and it does help to articulate the typical architectural goal of having deep recessed openings, and so those doors are so deeply recessed that it becomes a strong architectural feature.
I have a minor question about your driveway cut. I'm sure you have a DMT meeting at the beginning, but have they looked at your latest drawing? Because I noticed the driveway cut, the curb cut is fourteen percent steep, which exceed the engineering standard at ten percent.
We may have done some refinements to it, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we're going, we will be going through a rigorous plan check process with, if you don't mind me using that phrase, or that description.
Sure, so the engineer will hold you to the gradient.
Yeah, and so grading plan check and so forth. We may adjust it, but whatever we do, we have the latitude to adjust that elevation and make sure we comply with all the engineering requirements. Yeah.
I think when we approved one on Granada here about a year ago, there was a discussion and concern about the, the garages themselves and their width and how they get the cars in, and how we addressed anything there, or is it pretty standard garage width?
The project is designed to meet the city's standard.
Okay.
No more and no less right now. It just, there's just no room to, to make it any wider without destroying an entry configuration.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant representative? Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Thank you.
This is a Michael Luna night tonight, I guess. With that, we'll open the public hearing. We do have on the dius, and Mr. Chris Carrillo wants to speak. Mrs., okay, Chris. And we also received on the dius your email that you sent to the city also. So please come forward and give us your, your thoughts on the subject.
This is my first exposure. My name is Chris Correa, and my husband and myself own the neighboring home to the east side of the project. We live in a unique and vibrant neighborhood. On our side of Rosa are four single level family homes that date from 1942 to the early sixties. The proposed project wants to develop a duplex on a same-sized lot in the middle of these homes. Design guidelines, guidelines require in scale, form, setbacks, and materials compatibility with adjacent structures. None of these descriptions are true for that street, for our street. The small house bordering the west side of the project dates to 1942. It's noted a historic property but not registered as such. The project is four times greater in size. It's two and a third times larger than our house, and even larger in respect to the other two houses. Our houses and the apartments across the street are mid-century modern and two-story and one and a half story, not two slash three-storied as described in the consistency box. The scale of this duplex is also in conflict with the apartments. Even as they were built decades ago, that should have reflected a less structured era of building. All but one of those have some curbside parking, as do all the houses. They have much larger setbacks from the street, even larger setbacks for their living areas because they have street-facing patios which act to unite our neighborhood, allowing for interaction amongst us. Some have driveways to back parking areas, taking even more cars off the street. None pose so prominently and close to the street as this proposed duplex. Parking is always a tough problem on our street, and we all know that's the stressful situation that this duplex will add to our ongoing problems. It provides no parking spaces for their visitors or deliveries. The inhabitants will likely join in the competition for empty street parking because the two tandem parking garages create problems in actual practice as they require disciplined, organized, congenial behaviors to actually work. Likely two cars will be housed in the eight, see, I said it was an eighteen-foot driveway, but sorry, in the twenty-two-foot driveway. What we can imagine are where the four trash cans, or more for green waste, are placed, or three or more drivers, if three or more drivers reside on one side of the duplex. There is also an argument for walkability and pedestrian orientation on Rosa. I think that even with no cars parked in the driveway, no one would actually use the tiny piece of sidewalk that bridges their apron and our driveway. There are no sidewalk, there's no sidewalk to walk to on the other side. It is a bridge to nowhere. We actually provide a far bigger strip of flat sidewalk where our curbside parking is, and no one has ever used this. People, am I over?
Your, your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Very good, nice presentation. Anybody else wish to just public speak? This is the only card I have. With that, we'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just to address kind of an implied question from the, from the speaker, she talked about the no sidewalk in front of the unit, and maybe you could clarify the requirements for new development, the requirements for the sidewalk?
Yes, of course. So all new developments are required to put sidewalk in if they're over a certain threshold, typically it's $50,000, or if you're doing improvements to your home in excess of $50,000. And that's the way for the city to eventually get sidewalk in those areas that don't have sidewalk and not having to go through and do sidewalk improvement, improvements throughout the entire area.
So there's going to be a sidewalk, a new sidewalk in front of.
There will be.
This, okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
Yes, Amber, can you also clarify a few factual issue the speaker just mentioned? She said in the report, we said that there are three and two, two slash three-story home, and she said there isn't any. Can you clarify that?
Just so I understand your question, you want me to clarify the three-story of this development, or just the surrounding area, what the surrounding area is made of?
The surrounding area, is that what you want?
All on the same street.
Okay.
Are there, are there any building that's three-story?
So I know that directly adjacent on either side, there are one-story homes, and to the back, there's a two-story commercial building that has the, the preschool in it, and then across the street directly from them is the, are two-story developments that she had noted. had noted. I'm more than happy to bring up the Google Maps and look around and see where the nearest three-story is, but I believe it's up the street a little way. There may be one there, but the one I'm thinking of might be two-story also, actually.
Commissioner Smith.
Just want to make it clear that this design complies with vertical height and two stories plus a roof deck. Those design guidelines are all applicable to this particular lot. We're not stretching anything beyond what's already there. Is that right? So it's all compliance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, within staff, where I think we meet all the typical zoning requirements. And I think if you look at the notes from design review, do you have any other comments to add, or Chair of Design Review something?
No, I think the minutes pretty much explained what we were looking for, and the applicant and their architect complied with any requests that we had. This is one of those cases where it's allowed by zone, and to limit somebody to one story or something like that is really downsizing the zone. And I think they comply and they comply with the intent, so I can make the findings particularly that it's compatible with the neighborhood and all the other items we have to agree with. So I can support the project.
Mr. Wu.
Yeah, quick question for the members of the design review. The, when I asked about the height of the, appearance of the height of the first floor, I know you guys probably took a deeper look at this than we have. What do you, what's your feeling about maybe raising the garage doors or doing something to help the height of that first floor? Do you think it's worth playing with?
Well, each of them can mention, if you look at the smaller one and the large handouts we got, they are better in proportion than the one on our screen there, so it is tall. I wouldn't say raising the doors themselves, if the arch came up a little bit, that would make it look taller. If you look over to the right-hand side, it has the appearance you're talking about where the entry into, I think it's the A or one unit. So that kind of set the plate line. You can see where the dotted line is just under the knee braces for his balconet, as he called it.
Looking from a distance.
Are, so.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
He could raise the arch up a little bit and give a little heel above the garage door before the arch starts, and that would accent it a little bit. But at the time when we reviewed it, design review, it didn't appear to be an issue with the drawings we were looking at.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Tally.
Okay. Is there any other discussion amongst the commissioners?
I do have a general comment, if I may, Chair Brown. So our development standards allow for development to the extent that in some cases, we see a maximization of structure on a property, which leaves little opportunity to introduce plant material that could aid in softening the built environment. And I think, in my opinion, this is a very nice-looking design, nice-looking structure. I'm troubled with the fact there isn't a whole lot of landscape or open space, so we're lacking a balance and harmony between indoor and outdoor living, in my opinion. It works architecturally, just would like to see more landscape materials in these projects, because if we imagine a proliferation of this sort of design along a streetscape, we'd suddenly lose those important softer elements along the streetscape, which could be detrimental to the visual experience.
I think the difference you see there really is the fact that this is a residential medium zoned area, and so the things we demand of ourselves in the residential low area are different. So where you get more of that in the low area than you do in the medium area. Commissioner Crandall, you're lighting on?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that real quickly. The single-family we have, I think it's 45 or 50 percent requirement for landscaping. Duplex, and I believe triplex, it's whatever's left. And then you'll see later on today, when we do the next project, there is a requirement for outdoor living space on multifamily. And it's a quirk of our, no, it's not a quirk, but it's a stipulation in our zoning ordinance that that's kind of what you get. And I agree, but do you have comments? I was going to go ahead and make a motion.
Oh, I'd just like to comment too. Michael, I appreciate your comments on that landscaping and softening the architecture. A lot of time, RM zone allows each one unit for every 1,800 square feet lot area, that's a lot. If you look at the net density, it's over 20 dwelling units per net acre, so that's a lot. So especially, our landscape requirement says, you know, outside of the minimum necessary area for driveways, they all need to be landscaped. When we have those tandem parking, they just have the driveways loaded off the street, and suddenly, much of your frontage is occupied by those hardscapes, and there isn't much opportunity to add those landscaped. I think that's something we, you know, the city needs to address from the policy, you know, with the intensity of those, we call RM zone, they're pretty high density, shall we, shall we change something to give more opportunity?
Maybe that's food for thought to feed back to city staff to look at, but certainly not part of the project tonight.
Right, right. That's off the point today.
You want to make a motion?
Your light is on.
I'd like to make a motion approving Resolution Number PC 17-021, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving cultural heritage permit 16-444, comma, Rosa duplex, a request to construct a new duplex on a vacant lot located at 100 Avenida Rosa.
A motion by Commissioner Tally, second by Commissioner Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass at 7-0. Good luck. That will move to item 8B. 109 through 111 La Ronda, conditional use permit 16-222, and architectural permit 16-221, La Ronda, six apartments.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Leonie Schuler, contract planner, and, sorry. Okay, so as it was introduced, this is a six-unit apartment structure being proposed at 109 and 111.
La Ronda.
La Ronda. There we go. So the zoning is a residential medium zone, and the project site is a vacant lot, it's actually several lots of just over 12,000 square feet. The staff report included photos of the project site as well. Here, I have two photos of the site. The top right shows the site as viewed from La Ronda, showing the slope of the property, which slopes down and away from the street. The photo on the left is taken from the back of the site, as viewed from the Boys and Girls Club. The project site, as I said, consists of several lots, which are conditioned to be merged prior to the issuance of building permits for the project. City standards would allow a maximum of seven units on this property, and six units are So the applicant, as I said, is proposing six units. They are two-bedroom apartments, and they range in size from 1,500, approximately 1,500 square feet, to approximately 1,750 square feet. Each unit includes an attached two-car garage, and also a private patio or deck area of roughly 200 to 300 square feet, depending on the individual unit's location. With regard to parking, city standards require a minimum of two parking spaces per unit, plus two guest spaces for the overall development. The units have been designed with a direct-access two-car garage for each unit, and there are two additional guest spaces for the development, as required by code. The guest spaces are located at the front of the site, and they're accessed directly from the street. And then the private garages are accessed from a shared motor court, which is internal to the site, located below, and screened somewhat from street view. The project has been evaluated for compliance with the city's development standards, and has been determined to conform to these standards, including setbacks, height, lot coverage, landscape, and parking. One discretionary item for the commission's consideration is compliance with the design guidelines for usable open space. A discussion of this was included in your staff report. Essentially, an area of 100 square feet of private space is recommended by the city's guidelines. And then additionally, it is suggested that all multiple-unit projects should have at least 100 square feet of group open space as well. In this case, the group open space, because of the constraints of the site, there is no conforming group open space. However, the site design has provided greater than recommended private outdoor areas in the form of patios and decks for each individual unit, and those range from 173 to 324 square feet per unit, and that's intended to offset that lack of group open space. So here, this elevation shows the proposed architecture, which is contemporary in style. Wall and roof offsets, and contrasting colors and materials are proposed to create interest and to reduce the appearance of building mass. This elevation shows the front building. The development is comprised of two buildings, as you know from your plans. This is the front building, which is the view from La Ronda. And then this, again, is the front building, Building One, as viewed from the interior of the site, showing the garages at the lower level for the two units in this building, and then the private decks that are located on the upper level with an orientation towards the north coast. The back building, Building Two, contains four units, which have entries and garages from the motor court. And again, this elevation shows the back building as viewed from the motor court. And then the back of the back building shows the units, which include a deck at the upper level, and then a covered patio at the ground level. And so this is how it would appear from the rear, rear property line. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and further recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit and architectural permit, subject to the attached resolution and the conditions contained therein. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes, I'd like to interject here. Your picture from the Boys and Girls Club reminded me that I'm on the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club, and so I queried our Assistant City Attorney on that a couple days ago, along with the city planner, about should I recuse, or is there any conflict? And the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney has determined that I am not in conflict because I have no material advantage or financial reward or involvement other than on the Board of Directors for that. So I'd like to make sure that's in the record. And if you have any other comments, Mel?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's accurate. As a, as a board member for a nonprofit, there's an exception for unpaid volunteer members of a nonprofit, so there's no financial interest there and therefore no conflict.
Sorry, I had to bring that up. Your picture reminded me that I was, I should have brought that up before.
Thank you.
With that, I guess we have some questions to staff. We'll start with Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is, I noticed there was a park maybe half a block away. Is that a public park, do you know, or is it part of the Boys Club?
I know the Boys Club is directly behind, and I believe the public park is a separate facility. Amber, I'm going to have to lean on you.
Park around the bottom of the canyon is a public park.
That's a public park, okay, great.
In fact, the Boys and Girls Club is on city property.
Okay. And do we know, there's a lot of sports lighting and parking lot lighting at the Boys and Girls Club that I imagine could affect this. Do we know, does, do the Boys Club have some conditions of approval in terms of managing the lighting, how late it can go on, things like that, in terms of affecting the local residents there? Because these people, it looks like they'll probably be some of the closest residents to those lightings, to that light.
Which lighting are you?
Like, well, in particular, the sports lighting, that's the most important. There's also parking lot.
Very good question. The basketball court, that's the basketball court down below there.
I think a baseball field, too, so.
Well, that's city park there way over there, and that's got compliant lighting. The basketball court right below the property. In fact, the city is putting new lighting in there, in a SIP project this year, for lighting, which, and that's the lights for the basketball court. Now, we don't operate that as.
Those are, those lights right there? Those are basketball court lights, okay.
Correct.
And they aren't, is there, I'm just trying to get an idea of what's going to happen with residents.
I believe there's a timing on, a timer on, and it goes out at 10 o'clock. We don't operate that late as a Boys and Girls Club, so with an agreement with the city, even though it's fenced off while we're open for security to children, when the Boys and Girls Club closes, which is about 7 o'clock, the neighborhood, we open the gates, we lock our doors, so the neighborhood can use, those are city basketball courts. And so then, and in fact, the neighborhood does use, I've watched them walk by across the parking lot of the Boys and Girls Club to the courts, and there's a lively activity of neighborhood basketball goes on down there.
So really, it's a city, I guess it's a question, the city does align for the basketball courts for the adjacent fields? Do we know about any timing with that? Does the city turn it off after 10 o'clock or something?
From this picture, it looks like that those are shielded, so that way the light is within there, so there shouldn't be any ambient lighting being shined directly into that.
That's true, but there's also noise, you know, people playing basketball and shouting and stuff, so.
Yes, and we can verify that I do believe it closes at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, okay.
As Commissioner Brown stated. And then as far as the field themselves, I believe that those have the new light fixtures, I'm going to get this wrong, and it starts with an M, you know, the musket lighting or, there's a, there's a specific type that.
Mascot.
Mascot, thank you, so close, that shields it, that is the most recent technology in order to help with ambient light there from the fields also.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, was there one there? I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Commissioner Tally.
So I have, I had one question, and now I have another. The first question is on the discretionary component of this within the group open, the group open space. Actually, hearing that the Boys and Girls Clubs open their gates up, that leads me to think that that's actually very beneficial towards the recommendation here, but is there a reason at the motor court itself, which looks like, you know, it's a nice kind of communal area, which I'm sure if there's kids, will be frequented by kids, doesn't count towards any of that open space?
The guidelines require that you have what would be a dedicated usable open space, and that would not include driveways and vehicular accessways, although as a practicality, you know, the kids will be out there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And so the second thing is, in just listening to some of this about the basketball goals that are down at the Boys and Girls Club and the adjoining baseball field, as somebody that's seen people move near to airports and then complain about the noise that airplanes make, I want to make sure that their, the builder and/or their representations will be that, I don't want to hear them coming back complaining about the stuff that exists right now. I mean, we have facilities where kids are playing, and buyer beware, right? So I want to make sure that that is, is well-known, because I think that would be, I just think that'd be a travesty towards the community for them to complain about something that they knew about ahead of time.
That's a good point. We have, our summer program right now has over 400 or 500 children enrolled in an average daily attendance of around 250.
And I'd like to.
That's from 7:00 in the morning till about 5:00 at night, by the way, during the summer.
And I'd like to commend the Chair on his volunteer service to a very worthwhile organization.
I have a question to staff, maybe the applicant. The picture here we see of the back of the property with the slope, off to the right, there's some bushes there, adjoining property, and that's where the power pole is.
Yes, uh-huh.
And that power line goes directly across the out. And that power line goes directly across the applicant's property to the Boys and Girls Club. That's the main connection for electrical power. So what is the, what is the applicant or the city going to do about making sure their power gets rerouted to the Boys and Girls Club?
The pole itself is located just off the property line. However, it is, the onus is on the developer here and the property owner to reroute those lines. And it's my understanding that they have already been in preliminary contact with SDGNE to discuss how that, how that will take place.
So is there, is the staff comfortable that through engineering and the review processes will be covered properly, that there will be no power disruption to the Boys and Girls Club? Or should we write that in as a conditional use? Or you, you think the engineering and review and permitting process will cover it?
I spoke with the building official specifically about that. So I know it's something that they will check for and make sure of during structural plan check that that's taken care of.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
This project's looking for two permits. Looking for an architectural permit, which is understandable, because it's a new building and it has to have a certain amount of architecture. And as I mentioned earlier, we have two guidelines. This one's probably less than the cultural heritage, but nevertheless, there's architectural guidelines for it. That makes sense to me. Tell me why we need a conditional use permit?
The city zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for all developments of five or more units.
Okay. That's what I thought. This property is zoned for five units.
Seven.
Seven, actually, yes.
I thought it was zoned for five.
They're allowed...
If you look at the zoning, doesn't it say five units for that? RM zone.
There's only ordinance, in our briefing manuals, it says seven.
So what, it doesn't actually say on this lot, there's a maximum of X amount of units allowed. What it says is that, you know, based on the square footage of the lot, in this case, the density is one unit per 1,800 square feet of lot area, correct me if I'm wrong. So you take the total square footage of the lot and divide it by 1,800, and that gives you your maximum density. So it's all based on the total square footage of the lot.
How much square footage per unit?
1,800.
1,800. Okay, well, technically, though, the conditional use permit is allowing five go to six, isn't that, isn't that what it's, no?
No, it's, you're allowed seven, they're going to six.
So they need a conditional use permit as well. So I'm just trying, why would they need a conditional use permit if they're going from seven to six?
Anything over five.
So if you were building on an acre, right, which I know is hard to find, but maybe even two acres, two acres, and you were going to build six units, you'd still need a conditional use permit, correct?
That's correct.
So even if it was, it's just that magic number's five.
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with the density, it's just five.
Well, I was just curious, because, you know, you're getting an extra unit on a site that was originally zoned technically for five units. And then the research that I did talked about a very strange kind of a thing of 10 units per, no, 15, it was 15 units per growth acre. Is that right? Is that the right calculation?
Is that a general plan density?
That's a new number to me.
So the correct calculation is one unit per 1,800 square feet of lot area.
Where is that?
In the zoning ordinance, within the table that identifies the development standards. And it pretty much looks like in the table in your report.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we're not really asking for a special favor here. We're just letting it comply with what it can do.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wu. Yes, Lianna. On the development standard, you underneath setbacks for parking, you said 18 feet for standard and 15 feet setback for accessible parking. Can you provide a source for that?
Yes, we, there was some discussion about the parking on the site, because the code, the, is it the International Building Code, requires an accessible parking space for the development. And so the two guest spaces that are at the front, you have one that is a standard parking space and one that is a, an accessible, you know, a handicap access space. And I can pull up that diagram that I had here. So here you have a handicap access or accessible space, and here you have a standard space. And by code, the accessible space is not allowed, no one is allowed by law to park tandem behind it. And that's why it has the, a lesser setback than is required for the standard space, which someone could park in the driveway potentially behind, behind the parking space. So that 18 feet is meant to give enough clearance, as I understand it, for a tandem space.
Okay, if nobody's allowed to park behind accessible parking, why we need that setback at all?
Well, the code sets the setback, the minimum setback to any parking space at 15 feet. And it goes on then to require an additional three feet, the 18 feet, in order to not have cars overhang the sidewalk. And Amber, I don't know if you can clarify that any better than, than I just explained.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Wu?
Sort of. Okay, another question. You also mentioned that the topography of the site and the parking requirements for a multi-unit development necessitate a large amount of driveway and circulation area, limiting the area available to group open space. Now, let's talk about the parking requirement first. Every multifamily project is subjected to the same parking requirement, if it's RM. Is there any special condition on the site that will prevent this project from providing enough group open space comparing to a typical multifamily development?
Well, given the slightly GOR shaped, shape of the lot, and the slope of it, you really could not provide all of the parking up front, or it would be difficult to do so. And in order to design something that achieves the six units that they're looking to do and provide sufficient parking, they need a lot of circulation for that to get down into the site. They do have quite a bit of landscaping and open space around the property, and I do have a picture of the landscape plan. None of it qualifies towards the group open space, because it doesn't achieve a 15-foot minimum dimension in each direction. So here I have the landscape plan. I believe you have a colored copy of the landscape plan in your packets as well. So there is some passive landscape, landscaping around for the enjoyment of the, you know, of the residents and to buffer the development from adjacent other property. But because of the need for the circulation and the backup from each of the garages, there just isn't a qualifying area to put the group open space in. And again, the, you know, the applicant has designed the site to include much greater than is required in terms of private open space, which I would expect would be enjoyed and maybe used more, you know, by the residents.
For the largest landscape area in the middle, in the front, how big is that?
I'd have to look at a set of plans. Okay, I'll defer to the applicant. I'll have Mr...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any other questions of staff? With that, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation, or uncharacteristically, with Mr. Luna not saying anything?
Good evening, once again, Michael Luna, architect for this project. I'm here with the property owner and the landscape architect who is here as well. But to address your question straight away with regard to the size, that front landscape area looks to be about 24 by 12 feet, something about that size. So, welcome to what I consider to be probably one of the top 10 streets that I think in San Clemente that can use some investment and some improvement. It's, it's been an area of town that has not seen any significant improvements as long as I've been in town. And I think there's, has been a duplex that has been built down the street, but aside from that, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity on this particular area of town. So when I heard my client is willing to invest his resources here, I was certainly pleased to hear that. I think it'll really help the neighborhood. It is a difficult lot. Indeed, a very difficult sloping, downslope lot that really limits options. I can't tell you how difficult it is even to just get the six in here, although seven is allowable, just wouldn't fit, and it won't. Particularly when we want features such as attached garages to the unit, townhouse style, units that promote security and quality units, that are open space designed, very current floor plans, with vast and large exterior decks. On the question of decks, with regard to, excuse me, on the question of open space requirements, it is a guideline that says that you want to have at least 100 square feet for each residential unit, and ideally another 100 square feet in some sort of communal area. Having been through this process many times on multifamily housing projects in the city of San Clemente, this conversation has come up many times. And really, what has resulted each time when we have discussed this in the past, is that this guideline is really intended for larger multifamily developments. If you can imagine if we were doing a 20, 30, 40-unit project, and if we didn't have any common space, any communal space, then certainly this guideline should be very applicable. But when we have a proposal in front of you that has very generous, outdoor decks totaling almost 300 feet on average, and being an adjacent to a public park, and just being six units, we just completed 10 units on the south end of town, adjacent, right next door to a public park. And it was deemed during that review process that the public park can, can more than accommodate an open space and outdoor environment for a resident. And that project also had a very generous outdoor living space. So I would, I would point to history. I think history is really important as we look at this, this development, again, only six units. So I think what we have here is a quality development going in this neighborhood. There, as I mentioned, there are open plans, we have high ceilings, including clear-story windows in the living spaces. And the massing of the project is quite unique in that we are against a very large box. So I think that we're more than compatible with the Boys and Girls Club down below in terms of the scale of our proposed project. So I think we have to consider that context. And also, in terms of the context at La Ronda, La Ronda is, we're proposing, of course, just two stories on that elevation, compatible with the pattern of development there. With respect to the fact that it is sloping, I mean, our project steps very significantly, the old wedding cake example. We are stepping this development up the hill and providing relief setbacks back all the way up. We've broken this up into two components. The design guidelines encourage a courtyard-style approach to multifamily housing. We have a courtyard concept in front of you, and certainly meets that guideline objective. The, once again, the graphics on the PDFs, they're elongated, they really don't show the correct proportions of the, of the elevations and the design. So I think that's really something, Amber, we've got to work with in the future to see what we can do to dial these in, because it's deceiving every time. And with regard to SDGNE, SDGNE, in our preliminary analysis and conversations with them, indeed, we have some easement work to do. We'll be filing for a service order with them to rework the lines to make sure that all of the feeds to adjacent properties are addressed. We will never get a, even a temporary power pole out there if we haven't addressed this with SDGNE. SDGNE won't even give you a power pole unless they have the design completely resolved before you even start construction. We can't even get a power pole until all matters pertaining to their service feeds are addressed. So that's absolutely part of one of the additional steps that we have to take on this development to make sure that we've addressed the utilities. The conditions of approval, we reviewed them, they look to be appropriate, I think, for this project. I would remind you, please, that these, this open space, this common open space is a guideline. And I think that's why it was intended to be a guideline, that, and specifically, again, for larger developments, where there, where a common open space should be really provided in a larger development. And with that, we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Wu, you want a question?
Yes, have you had a preview with the OCFA?
Yes, we have, as part of the DMT process, absolutely.
Okay, because on the backside of your building, they typically require 150 feet to both poles, which you don't have. So how, they certainly have some discretion to accept it. What do they, what do they say?
As part of the DMT process, they indicated that, they identified that it was a little short on the hose pool. In order to provide a factor of safety, we agreed to do the rear structure in one hour construction. That provides additional fire safety in the type of construction, and that was acceptable to them as a trade-off for the hose pooling.
Okay, very good question. Mr. Tally.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the earlier comment that I made about the Boys and Girls Club and the parks there. Wanted to make sure that the applicant and the owners are aware of those and don't have any, have any problems at all with kids running around and making noise and being kids and being happy.
That's music to my ears.
Well, it is to mine, but not to some.
But not for everybody, I understand. But we understand the context, we understand the context, and we think it's a...
Well, it's up to the owners to make sure that the renters know.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Tally?
Oh, sure. Let me introduce, please, Jonathan Brooks, the owner of the project.
Hi.
Just a minute. Mr. Rulon, do you still have a question of Mr. Michael?
I did, if you don't mind.
Just hold on a minute, I think Mr. Rulon is not going to let you off the hook too fast.
Yeah, I'm guessing you're not going to like my question either. Did you, have you considered, I just kind of think it's nice, of course, to have the carports somewhere, you know, in back as opposed to street-facing. Did you give any consideration to the possibility of moving the unit number one closer to the street, so you have more room in the motor court area for the guest parking? Is that a possibility?
No. Setbacks and parking setbacks and building setbacks didn't allow us to bring this any closer to the street. We wish we could have. But setbacks being what they are, I didn't...
But if you don't have any parking setbacks in the front, because you moved those to the back?
Well, we have, we have parking setbacks in the front for sure.
But, what was that?
It's important to understand, and this was discussed earlier, that cars have to adhere to the same setbacks, parking, required parking has to adhere to the same setbacks as building setbacks in the front half of the site.
No, I understand, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, and if I'm not making myself clear, I'm sorry, is if we, is there a way to take the parking, or did you consider this, this, yeah, if you can look at the, show a front elevation, instead of having the parking here, which requires the setbacks and that sort of thing, and instead move those back into the motor court area behind unit one, between unit one and two, you'd, I'm sure you'd have to move unit one closer to the street in order to accommodate that. But, you know, I didn't know how the setback math would work for that or anything like that, but I was wondering if you'd taken a look at that or considered that.
I can't fit any additional parking spaces on the lower motor court, because they don't... I can't fit any additional parking spaces on the lower motor court because they don't, any additional spaces would not comply with the turning radiuses. On a single entrance movement in, engineering requires that you have to be able to, on an additional, excuse me, on an initial approach, you have to be able to get your car into that parking space without any additional maneuvers. So, I just physically can't get any additional parking spaces down there. We tried. So, it's our only option is to have those spaces up there. But it's also important to note that on the accessible parking space, which is required, that we couldn't put it down there either because that has to have access to the sidewalk and the main entrance at the upper level. The accessible unit is at the upper level.
But, and you couldn't fit it if you made that top-level motor court, the street-level motor court? And not talking about the underground parking, I'm talking about the street level. If you made that larger, that still couldn't accommodate those things?
Yeah. It would put the square footage on that level out of height. And of course, we're trying to, we're trying to take advantage of the ocean views here. We're trying to, you know, appreciate that resource that we have. So, by filling the upper level up with parking, it takes away living space opportunities, which then takes us out of ocean views from the units. Am I understanding your question properly, Jen?
I think so. I think so. I was looking at it, and I was thinking, you know, without your spatial expertise, well, gee, what if we, instead of having parking there, we had, we moved the building up closer to the street? That would give us more room back there. So, that's why, that was just a thought that I had. I don't know if it would work.
There just physically isn't room for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to help Michael out on that a little bit, you almost need three faces of the buildings to get his parking to. Moving any parking down below additional parking, can't get into the garages then. You've got parking in front of them. So, he needs basically the width of three faces of the buildings to get all your parking.
Yeah, for sure.
And you can't, mathematically, you can't fill it off.
Yeah, and we wanted to, absolutely, there was certainly another option of not going to townhouse units. But we felt contextually in this neighborhood that having attached garages was crucial for security. And so, that raises the quality of development, having those attached garages, and that posed certain limitations in order to achieve that. And we think that that is really very valuable.
I would agree with that, just the security aspect of it, as a matter of fact.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it's not of the applicant here. It's more of the designer review subcommittee does, just, I want to make sure I understand, they do look at some of these items. I mean, this is the type of stuff that you spend a fair amount of time on, kind of really trying to get into the nuts and bolts of the design.
It is. I was not in attendance at this particular one, so Michael and Jen would have to be the ones to respond to that. That is something we typically do.
Okay. Just want to make sure that it is being looked at at the design subcommittee review.
The fact that the development is broken up into two buildings really helps, again, to meet that objective of the design guideline to create courtyard-style architecture. And I think we were able to do that, and it also softens the development instead of having one big structure. And so, I think it's softer in the way we have it, better designed.
Thank you, Michael. I'll let you get offstage real quick and get your compatriot up here.
Hi. Thanks for your time tonight. Just to address your question about complaints about Boys and Girls Club, lights and noise. I'm, myself, in the beginning, have started to plan a family. No concerns, you know, I have dogs, and noise and lights are nothing. I intend on living on one of the units, the one actually closest to the Boys and Girls Club myself. So, you know, this isn't, yeah.
You can show your dark hair before they turn.
If there's any other concerns I can address, I'd be glad to, if anyone else...
Thank you very much for your time and your investment in the area. At this time, I'll close that part of the hearing and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Madam Secretary, do we have any cards at all?
Yes, I would like to, please.
If you fill out a card, or if you have a...
I didn't have, didn't realize I needed to do a card.
Okay, well, go ahead and speak and fill out the card after your...
Absolutely, no problem.
And please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Sherri Reins, and I live at 128 La Ronda.
Okay.
So, I do take a little issue with some of the comments, but that's not why I'm here. My concern is adding six units in an already extremely crowded street. I brought a couple of pictures. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to get them all done before. Our biggest challenge in La Ronda, we're on La Ronda right now and in that very neighborhood, is the size of the street and the number of cars, not only parked on that, as you can see there, but it is not a wide street. My house was moved there in 1957. Obviously, no sidewalk. When they built the street, they didn't have sidewalks. When they started adding sidewalks, it narrowed the street dramatically. If you see, if you are there when there are multiple cars or vehicles parked, which is most of the time, and two cars are trying to go in opposite directions, it just doesn't work. One has to back up and let the other one go if there's not space on the side where they can kind of pull in. It is very, I find it very dangerous. One of the questions about the fire, I, or the Orange County Fire Department, yeah, if you've got too many cars parked on that street, how is a fire truck going to get down there? I happened to have a fire in 1999 when I was, I was a corporate executive. I was on a business trip, and my house caught fire, and the fire engines had a hard time getting there just because of that. So, would I like to see fewer units? Absolutely. Because Real World says you may have parking for two cars. How many people actually do it? Very few. If that doesn't happen, which I don't have great hope that it will, but I'd like it, I would like to see us change La Ronda into a one-way street so that we do not have the traffic attempting to go around each other. It is dangerous. It is very concerning to me as a resident. I've seen too many people come close to hitting each other. And with the park right there, as you can see, the one picture, the darker, they're not very good, these are all cell phone camera pictures, that's the access to Bonita Canyon Park. So, you get kids running down there, you know, lately, they've discovered that it's really great to race down the sidewalk or the street on their scooters or their bikes. Very dangerous with the cars whipping around, going, trying to go both directions. So, that is my biggest concern, is that we look at the traffic congestion there, consider do we really need six more units with all of the vehicles that are already there? And if we do, if that's the way it's going to go, then we need to make the street a one-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. Please fill out the card and thank you for coming.
I will. Is it back there?
She's got some for you right there.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak? And have they, okay. State your name and city of residence.
Hello, Scott McKenzie, 25-year resident of La Ronda Loop. Sherri's concerns are my concerns. The traffic circulation is a major issue. La Ronda, if any of you have driven it recently, it's a very windy road. When cars are parked on both sides of the street, two cars can often not pass each other. I also want to see La Ronda turned into a one-way street. The city has already done a precedent on Estrella across from the Bonito Canyon Park by the tennis courts, Cay Redondell, same type of street. It has two connections into, La Ronda has two connections into El Bertal, Cay Redondell has two connections into Estrella, same type of street. And Cay Redondell has a very good traffic flow because of the one-way loop. I'd like to propose you talk to the city traffic engineer about exploring options to turn La Ronda into a one-way loop. I'm not necessarily opposed to the development. Looks like a nice building, but it'll certainly add a lot of traffic to La Ronda. Thank you.
You're welcome. Please fill out the card and give it to our recording secretary. Anyone else wish to speak? Hand him another card, if you would, please. State your name and city of residence.
How you doing? I'm Ryan Squirrel, 124 Chiquita, San Clemente, California. I live behind Sherri. I have a two-year-old daughter, and we like to go outside and draw on the sidewalks and have a good time and all that kind of stuff. This traffic ordinance, for lack of my verbiage, you know, the technical term for it, has to happen. It's the sketchy street where I have to have 36-inch parking cones that I have to put out and making sure that when you're whipping down La Ronda, you're not hitting my dog or my daughter, myself, the neighbor kids. We all like a tight community. We like to go out publicly, talk to each other, walk our dogs, say hi to each other. With the way that it is now, adding an additional population on top of this, it's a time bomb where something can happen, and I just don't want it to happen to my family or the families around me. Taking my daughter out to the street, the ride her scooter, teach her to ride her bike, draw with the chalk, to have parking cones out there just to make sure that we're there, kind of like an unacceptable situation in my opinion. So, I'd really like you guys to consider this. On top of that, on the corner of El Camino Real and La Ronda is a horrible, horrible blind corner. My proposal is to red curb that left side where I have to flash my brights when inching out, inching out, because the traffic on Portal is horrible. I mean, we're talking 60 miles an hour plus out of 35 mile an hour zone. I'd like you guys to really consider that blind corner on the left side of La Ronda and El Camino Real. Big trucks parked there, they, you know, they're inching for space. They try to get on that lip where you can walk up. It's just, it's a horrible, it's a horrible corner there. So, I'd like you guys to at least consider that. Thanks, guys.
Please fill out the card and give it to the recording secretary. Anybody else wish to speak? Without all close of public commentary, I would make a suggestion to the neighborhood. I'm certainly glad you guys came out tonight. We are the traffic commission, by the way. However, the way to initiate this properly is a petition from the neighborhood. And if you have a petition signed by the neighborhood, and there's particularly more than 50% or a high percentage rate, and you submit that to the city, to our traffic engineer, Mr. Frank, and he'll come down and have a neighborhood outreach with you with your concerns of a one-way street and as far as red paint on the curb. So, if you, the neighborhood, can initiate that, the city, our traffic engineering group are really dynamic, and they will respond. And they'll come down and have a meeting in one of your houses.
Is there a form that we should use? Is there like something that...
Make a form.
I can speak to you afterwards and give you the contact information that we have.
Okay. We can set that up. I mean, but it's the power of the neighborhood with signatures will get it moving.
Easily.
Okay? So, I'm glad you came out tonight. You've probably been thinking about this and talking about it in the neighborhood for many years.
He's been doing it for a long time.
So, put your pencil and paper and signatures and addresses and property owners and submit it to the city, and Mr. Frank will take, I guarantee he'll take action on it.
Very crowded street.
And red paint and one-way streets and stuff like that. So, come forward, and he'll come down and have a meeting in your neighborhood, in one of your houses.
And if I could, you know, that's the way that starts from the neighbors, but this street's kind of a slam dunk in terms of the traffic. And I think when we did our site visits, all is probably experienced.
We all went down there.
It's a lot of bad streets in the city, and this one's one of the worst. Is there a way that we can be more proactive about it? You know, have Tom get started on it or set up an agenda item for us at a future meeting so they can get going on what they need to get going on? But maybe we can also be a little more proactive in a case like this.
I'm happy to talk to Tom tomorrow in the office and let him know that this concern came up.
Okay, great.
He's only 75 feet away from me. That'd be cool.
Yeah, thank you.
And he and Jennifer, we had a great, dynamic duo of traffic engineers.
Are my clients satisfied as well?
Yeah.
One-way loop, absolutely.
Okay. Well, that will close the public hearing and enter into discussion. And let's just start with Mr. Talley. I think you guys will like it first.
Yeah, so, so I think this, thank you for the clarification on the kids. A good, again, good luck. Couple of things that I thought that were interesting on this. One, the discussion of guidelines via regulations came up again, so that's always nice to hear. I think the open space, or the group open space concern practically is dealt with with the motor court and also effectively with the resources that are in the community. I think, again, I'll echo my colleagues' comments here on the traffic. I think, as we heard last week, there was probably a community that would have given quite a bit to have people have to stop and start to go around, but we need to, we need to make sure that when we have problems like this...
Two weeks ago, they were speeding through another...
Oh, yeah, exactly. We need to make sure that our traffic engineer and traffic department is taking a look at this, especially when it's brought to our attention. I think, I think the esteemed commissioner here is correct. We need to help jumpstart that to the degree we can. Nice design. I support it.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, I too support this project. I think it's an exciting nod to the style, and it's not a common design flavor of architecture that we see around town. So, I'm excited to see this project. I do, I do have a concern. Aesthetically, it's a very, very nice-looking. I believe it's well-balanced. There are components that are related to this project that are unsightly, and maybe it's a discussion with staff right now about, about the relationship of this project to the power poles. I know we have a condition that requires undergrounding of the utility on property, but are we talking with the applicants, maybe in this case, there was a discussion about possibly undergrounding a wooden pole that would serve this property? I know there's a cost associated with that, and I know it's a separate process with the power provider, but it's something that's doable in many cases, and I think that the cost would, you know, be commensurate to the project, and there is a relationship to the project as we would be pulling power from it. So, is this something that has been discussed with the applicant?
You know, in this case, the pole is actually located off the applicant's site, and so that in the past and can create some difficulty because you have to obviously coordinate and have the approval of the adjacent property owner to be digging and doing things on their property. So, it's a coordination issue, and, you know, we can certainly condition what occurs on the project site, but to condition something to happen off-site like that is just not, really not a feasible thing to do.
Not feasible because of the cost?
Because of the coordination with other property owners. I mean, certainly, I guess if it was, if the adjacent property owner was on board with it. I did talk a bit with Bill King about that, and he said that that's been attempted in the past on a couple of other projects, and it just hasn't, hasn't come to fruition because of the coordination difficulties.
So, maybe we don't get into the nuts and bolts on this project, but I think it warrants discussion in the future. Other jurisdictions are successful in this request, and it's an opportunity to address some visual blight that may exist in the streetscape.
Let me comment on that briefly for you. Are you done? You have some other questions?
I am, thank you.
Counsel took action about three or four months ago. It's a very good topic, an emphasis on this issue because of the, what they call Project 20 funds, A, B, C, and D, which is funds set aside by San Diego Gas through our rates and all that stuff that allows you to underground. We, when we did Los Molinos, which is just the other side of the Boys and Girls Club, sucked everything out of that account for the next 10 or 12 years, literally. So, the council gave direction to the city engineer, Mr. Vonnegut, to come back with a new update to the ordinance that allows neighborhoods to undertake undergrounding in many, because of projects, A, B, C, and D, there's separate categories. And in certain other areas where the project funds are collected, put them into certain areas of high need and use, one of which is down where Mr. Ruin lives, is one of the areas that one of the council members directed. And then in the downtown area, rather than collect funds, have the merchants come forward. Because what you have to do is you have to get a concurrence of greater than 50% of the neighborhood to buy into this. Part of the funds, it goes onto your property tax for 20 years to pay for the undergrounding of the street, and then upfront cash, you pay for the hole that they dig from the street to your power box. And San Diego Gas Electric says, okay, your $12,000, give us $12,000. So, that's where the financing funding, when you do a neighborhood, comes in, because I've looked at it for my neighborhood. But there's, there's going to be an ordinance out there that's going to help facilitate this that's due from the city engineer to city council here within the next six months. So, there's an emphasis from the council to address this issue, try to accelerate undergrounding in the city of San Clemente.
Yeah, and it's an excellent topic, and it's a great mechanism to beautify our streetscape.
But it's very complex. But it's very complex.
When you have a development like this, it's a raw land, there's a lot of investment. It's different than, you know, a room addition, or, you know, chimney addition, or a driveway. This is, you know, so it makes it commensurate, the improvement commensurate to the project in terms of dollars and relationship. So, it's something that, you know, it struck me as an interesting point of this, but maybe in the future we ought to discuss it.
It's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack. Krishna Ruen, you have another thing? I know we have people over here waiting patiently, so.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I just wanted to verify, make sure my memory was correct, the park access from this development. Is it, is it just up the street and down that, down a ramp? Is there any fences or anything that we have to worry about?
The fence is around the whole park. The park is without fence.
But the entrance, I mean, they can get, the entrance is right there.
The one of the pictures that I, that I gave you has, you can see there is a block way down, you know, from LaRonda down to the park.
Okay, so it's like, what, half a block or something from your development, or something like that? Okay, good. You know, I like the project. It's gonna be a nice addition, I think. I struggle a little bit, because I, you know, I'm trying to make, think of it, how we can make it more like the general plan, more inviting to the street. I think it's, you know, it is gonna do that, but I, you know, it's got some nice architectural interest, but I kind of racked my brain. I couldn't come up with any suggestions. So, there you go. But I did have a couple of concerns, really about moving into the future. For one thing, the color palette was important to staff's, in terms of staff's recommendation, probably, design review, I'm guessing, and it seems to be kind of integral to the way the, to give the variation to the front of the building. So, I'm wondering if we need a condition of approval regarding repainting. So, I can imagine in five or ten years, there's new people there, you know, they need to repaint, and it all goes in one color, as opposed to like the separate color palette we have here. So, you have the condition of approval, that it just needs to go through staff, so that they can assure that the color palette is still appropriate, and they just start painting over in beige or something.
You mean to maintain the color palette?
Either maintain it, or if they want to change it, they have to get, you know, some approval from staff, so they don't, so they don't disrupt the way, the architectural features and the way they look with the current color palette. If we did it all in one color, if it was done in all in one cover, color in ten years, now you're spoiling the intent of the, sort of the approval of the architecture.
McDonald's just did their restaurant.
I gotta ask a question of Amber's.
Okay, yeah.
Amber, I understand exactly where he's coming from, but you could say that for anything we do in the city, and we aren't paint police. If we were in the architectural zone, I totally understand it. This is, I don't know if, Mal, if we can actually go there with the ordinances we've got.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there's no legal impediment to imposing a condition like this.
But on just one project, rather than doing a unified...
There's, there's no legal impediment. The only impediment to, to conditions are the Nolan and Dolan, a case which we discussed at our last meeting, but this would not be an impermissible exaction. It's certainly different, but it wouldn't be impermissible.
I'm sorry.
Just a minute, hold it. Excuse me. Continue.
I was gonna say, the reason I'm bringing it up is because, not just because it's any old color, but it's kind of integral to the presentation of the building, or it seems to be. Let me ask the architect, you did these, a lot of colors in South El Camino Real. I can't recall, did we have any conditions for those colors down there with those set of townhouses you did on South El Camino Real?
I don't think so. I don't think there was anything that was added to it.
Do you remember?
No.
I do. I actually was the project planner on that one, and there was a condition of approval, because at that time, the colors were so important to that zone and that design, that the colors were actually conditioned, that they had to stay with the property, actually.
Your memory's better than mine.
Yeah.
So, that's my concern. It's not, it's not that it's any old place. It's that it just seems to be integral there. So, that's, so, we can have more discussion about that. I'd appreciate it if we would. The other condition of approval, I think, goes into the question we had of the noise and the lighting and the, sort of the understanding of the people who were going to be living there. That's the case. No doubt that the current owner, you know, understands that, but again, in five, or ten, or twenty years, things change, and if the Boys Club is still there and we start to get complaints, that could be an issue. So, that may be, and I'm not quite sure how we would word this, but some kind of condition of approval where the residents would have to understand that that's the case, and, you know, at least up to a certain time, that they couldn't complain about the noise of the kids in the Boys Club. Like, maybe you can make it narrow like that.
It's fairly standard to include conditions of disclosures. That's been done.
You used to have in the airport compatible use zones where it had to be, when developed, like up off of El Toro on the runway. The owner will ensure that the renters or people who live there are aware of the public park and the...
Yeah, it's standard.
The Boys and Girls Club. There's pretty standard wording we could put in.
Could you come up with some wording that we might consider for a condition like that? Or do we need something like, do we need those precise wording here, or?
We don't tonight. You could certainly recommend that staff draft something.
Okay.
Let me look at Commissioner Twelve here.
Okay, while you're looking at that, can I move over to Commissioner Smith, who's been waiting patiently here for a while?
Thank you. Well, I like the project a lot, and I agree with Commissioner Tally that there's actually quite a nice open space for the kids to play there in their motor court. I can see him putting up a basketball hoop or something even, or playing soccer, whatever. It's really kind of urban. I like it a lot. I think it's secure, off the street. It's a good place for kids to play. I like that a lot. I'm really reluctant to say that you have to stick with these colors exactly for whatever. If we're gonna start doing that, we have to start doing that with everything we look at, and I don't think we've done that. And I'm not sure that it's fair to an owner to tell him that he has to paint his apartment building exactly the same way for all paternity. I don't know, but I don't support that. I think that that's part of what we do. We look at it, we get it built, but things change downstream. The thing that I would like to enhance, though, is I'm gonna support this. I would like to see if we could give a stronger recommendation as a commission to the city, making it very clear that we're approving this project, but that we're strongly suggesting that they make a serious attempt at working with the community to re-engineer the street. So, that we're physically supporting that particular aspect of this, not just thinking it's a good thing for them to do, but, I mean, I'd like to go that far, unless you think we need a straw vote for that or something. But I think it's really important. I think it's an important aspect of the project, and it was a great thing to point out, and I think it'll make it a better project. So, I'm just trying to think how we could strengthen that.
Okay, Mr. Ruen?
Yeah, I'm afraid of that. I'm in a minority tonight. Overall, I'm okay with the design, but I think the deal breaker for me is a complete lack of qualified group open space. Group open space is different from private space. Private open space is not a substitute for group open space. They're used for common uses. If the project were a little bigger, for example, I believe it's, if the project is fifteen units or more, and the code asks for a dedicated children's play area, because the smaller, so, it's not required, assuming that the children can just use the same group open space for the residents' use. So, it's almost a zero-sum game. The land is only so big. For every inch of land, if you use it for common area, if you use it for private spaces, then you don't have it for the common use, for the residents. It's, we, the analysis, the report talks about two reasons, the parking requirement and the topographic constraint. Parking requirement cannot be a reason. Now, we don't have group open space here, because basically, all the multifamily projects are subjected to the same parking requirement. So, you really cannot say, because we're required to have the parking spaces, so we cannot provide the required group open spaces. For the topographic constraint, this site is a sloped site. There is some physical constraint there. The design cleverly takes advantage of the slope, instead of having a mass-grading flat site with manufactured slope, which, in that case, you would lose some usable area. We use the two retaining walls on the backside of the basement that avoided losing any usable areas, and all the setbacks on all edges are at the minimum. So, the topographic constraint does not lead to any loss of usable area. Come back to the, so essentially, the reason why this design does not have any required group open space is that the applicant made a choice. They choose to not to provide it with what they propose, what they, their, the architect just said. He simply believes that the group open space requirement is not equal to his project, because it's small. I would disagree with that. In order to approve, support this CUP and Architectural Permit, we have to make the findings. If you look at CUP finding A, it says we have to meet the general plan. That's repeated on Architectural Permit A. Then, if you go to Architectural Permit Finding C, it says the architectural treatment of the project complies with the architectural guidelines in the city's design guidelines. And I think we already recognize that this one does not meet that design guidelines. I hear the argument that design guidelines are just guidelines.
That's correct.
But if it doesn't meet that guidelines, which is the case here, we cannot make that finding. We can, I cannot support it.
Thank you very much. But it is, my understanding is a guideline, not a requirement. Okay, Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, and I think to two things. I think, Michael, I like your idea of supporting the neighbors and all on the road direction and all, and maybe we can put a statement in new business at the end of our meeting, just to make a statement. And I think, Michael, on the project, Surfer Row, we, it was taken into account the recreation areas behind those buildings also on that particular project, correct?
Absolutely.
So, this is the first time we've said the guideline, if there's an alternative to providing the open space, be the fact that there's public open space adjacent to...
As well as 412 Aronosa Lane, right above Linden Lane Park?
Correct.
The beach condos, which was eight units, Beach House condos on Marquita was eight units, and same situation. Have a public park, beach access right there. The thing to understand about this guideline is that it's, this is intended for small units. If somebody, in a larger development, if you have small units that don't provide hardly any living space, or any much of deck, that you have a choice. You can go to a clubhouse room, where you can invite a large group of people over, a larger group of people to congregate.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so, I can make the findings, particularly on, I think it was C, that Zen was talking about, by the fact it is provided adjacent to or in near proximity to. So, I can make the findings and support the project.
Okay, let me wade in here as we go around. I can support the project. I think I would support a straw vote in new business. I think, Michael, that we support the neighborhood's initiative on the, on the, on the street down there and get their, get their petition rolling, and Amber can talk to Tom Franks tomorrow about it, because I know he'll jump on it. I'm gonna disagree with Commissioner Ruen. I think it is a guideline. I think, I remember these other projects we've approved. So, I can make the findings. I, I agree with some conditional use on the noise issue that Commissioner Ruen brought up. And maybe we ought to revisit the palette thing, like we posed on the surf housing down there in South El Camino Real, that, I don't know of the specific palette that's on there, but they, is there wording we can put in that they maintain the building in an appropriate painted palette condition of some sort? I mean, things change over time. We don't want to lock them into that for the next thirty years, but there's some wording we can consider that, so as maintaining good repair and within, within an architectural guidelines compatible with the neighborhood, so that nobody comes in and paints it chartreuse, or camouflage, or something like that. I would agree with what Mr. Commissioner Ruen brought up with, but I'm gonna support the project, and I would entertain those type of additional conditional uses. Mr. Tally?
So, I understand the color palette here. I think we wade into very dangerous territory when we start subjecting the city to being the paint police. Not only, I think, does that require a subjective review that, in some case, well, in most cases, homes associations take the lead on. I also think that we just have a staff that's tremendously overworked, and that this would create, create, create a burdensome effort for them to do that. And frankly, when somebody owns a house, it's not inside those types of constraints, you know. I don't think we should sit up here from a dais and tell them what to repaint it down the road, because tastes and what people view as acceptable do change, and that's, that's their property to do that, as we've said on other times in here. So, I support the project, obviously. I think we, in all but the very, very limited cases, I think we should stay out of color palette choice after the initial project is approved and done.
Mr. Ruen, your light's still on for a reason?
Yes, it is. Regarding the color palette, I never meant to imply that they should keep the same color palette for the next fifty years. I'm perfectly happy with, you know, I just didn't, the goal of this is to say, this is colored for a reason, for an architectural reason, not just merely because we like green this year or something. So, if we could write it in a way that you were talking about, where it maintains whatever architectural integrity that we intend for, intended for to have, regardless of what the colors are. That's the important thing. I'd be in favor, you know, sure, of a straw vote to, you know, we're later on in the meeting, to, regarding what you said. I don't think I could support it as a condition of approval, because I don't think we can enforce it, but as a straw vote, certainly. The group open space issue, you know, it is a guideline. I look at that as what is the purpose of it? The purpose of it is so that neighbors can get to know each other, so that they can have some fun together, and the kids have a place to play together, and there's a lot of opportunity for that there. And those decks are very large, very kind of almost luxurious. So, you know, in this case, I think, you know, having that, I think they're close enough to these parks and such, that it's gonna serve that purpose. But I do think, on the previous ones we did, on at least one of them, there was, I believe there was a fence, and we asked you to put in a gate, because it was like directly against the park. Maybe there's something, since these are city sports fields, maybe there's something similar we can do, some sort of entryway or access to the sports fields from the apartments.
Unfortunately, where the land lays down there, in a way, it brought, there's another lot to the side of it that kind of includes that, and everything they back up on to is actually the Boys and Girls Club, which is, we've got fenced off for security purposes.
So, it's Boys and Girls Club property right there, but the sports field are, yeah.
Same.
But, yeah, but they have to lock it off for security.
We, the city went together, and the city actually put up sixteen thousand, or some thirty thousand dollars to put the fencing around the area, and the current fencing that's right down at the bottom of the hill, and that probably on that city, on the wall, retaining wall that's down there now for security, to meet the Boys and Girls Club of America National Security Evaluation requirements. And the city council bought into that and approved a cost-sharing part of the fence.
So, if there's some kids there who want to play basketball down there, they actually have to go up to LaRonda, and then, you know, around the Boys Club?
They go down the street, down the, down the pathway to the park, turn left, and go to the basketball court.
Okay, good, because we know kids will never climb fences or anything, so that'll be... But we, but they, yeah, I mean, that's, that's gonna have to be their route, the formal route.
Yeah, we reinforced the fence, so they couldn't probably run underneath it and all that stuff.
Okay, well, I still, I still think they're close enough, both to that other park and to this one, that I'm happy with that, with that guideline. So, that's it for that.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Smith, your light's back on again?
Yes, it is. I very much want to support this project. I very much want to support this project, but I will not support having a color palette restriction on the project. I just can't do that, I don't think it's appropriate.
I'm not suggesting a color palette restriction.
I think we dropped that out.
I said we drop it.
This is for a comfort level. Is it planned to stay apartments or at some point convert to condo?
For the next 10 years, I plan to keep them as apartments. At some point in the future, I would imagine, maybe move condos and sell them off when I go to retire.
So that there'd be a homeowners association taking care of colors then, and we have one owner for the next 10 years?
And the, and the city's got some pretty stringent guidelines for HOA formations, too, already in place. Okay, we flogged this to death here.
Almost, one more. Yes, questions for the architect, Michael?
Yes, sir, Mike.
Was it your intent to differentiate each unit from one another with this, with this style of painting?
It was more of our intent to differentiate the scale and the massing of the project, to soften the, the architecture, to create interest overall, not really unit to unit, but to try to create variation in addition to the building stepping that it does. We thought that the additional color enhancements would add even more interest and more relief.
Okay, thank you very much. With that statement, I'll suggest some language to the color discussion, okay? That language would be something along these lines, that the project, the project is to maintain a color palette that differentiates each unit from one another in a manner, in a manner that is consistent with the architectural intent.
I'm not happy with that at all.
Well, I'm, I'm talking to the, so, I mean, we don't really pin a color palette per se, but we, but we address the intent of the architect.
Of the architect, of the architect, sure.
Architectural intent, to, the intent was to minimize the, the massing. And if we were to go that, down that road, and if we start to get a vote going, you know, I could get behind that, and that'd be language we could use.
I'm starting to side with Commissioner Tally here about being paint police and stuff like that.
I would have to say, if I was a planner, I wouldn't know how to enforce that. I wouldn't know what to pick, what to tell them, and it would change from planner to planner to planner to planner.
I understand, but we are not talking about a, a color code scheme.
No, I understand.
And, and by the way, this is not an uncommon approach.
But is it a good approach?
If, if the intent is there. And would I have seen this project differently if it was a different color or one color? I think I would have, absolutely. So it makes a big difference to me.
With the city guidelines, this requires a quality project, which I think Mr. Lu has stepped forward with, and, you know, through the design review process produced. And so I think I'm just going to kind of side with the no paint police typically, myself. Okay, Commissioner Wu, you want another 13th bite of the apple here?
No, no, just a quick question to Amber. If someone wants to change the color of the, color of their house, do they need any permit?
Not if they're outside the architectural overlay.
Okay, okay. Well, I do want to say, I'm going to change my position, because I think the process submitted to the public park provide, provide some recreational opportunities that kind of compensate it, it's not because of the lack, not because of the requirement of parking, not because of the topo, but it's because of the location nearby the public park, so I'm going to accept that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Tally?
I would like to make a motion, approving resolution number PC 17020, which is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit 16-222, and architectural permit 16-221, La Ronda Number 6, a request to construct a six-unit apartment building on a vacant site located at 109-111 La Ronda.
I think we had an additional conditional 31 for, for noise of some sort we were going to entertain.
Yeah, that's my question.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I believe that that, that condition was intended to provide a disclosure to prospective renters or purchasers.
Mm-hmm.
Here's some, some draft language for the, the commission to consider. Prior to entering into a contract for lease or purchase of a unit within the project, a prospective renter or purchaser should be provided with a written disclosure indicating the existence of the adjacent basketball courts and lights, including hours of operation and possible noise impacts.
Mission 12, let's see if that was...
That's for their, that's for theirs.
That's internal.
No, that's interior and exterior. That's for the people inside, not necessarily the noise from the inside getting out. It's like if you're under an airport, this is what you would see to protect the people from aircraft noise.
We should modify the language, because I think that addresses, that's the intent of that condition.
Yeah, Condition 12 would not apply to prospective renters or purchasers. This, this is, this is a one-time analysis.
We put it in there that the report be provided to them.
Sure.
I, I kind of favor just what you've offered as a condition of use, number 31.
It was just asking you to run that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Exterior, interior, etc.
Okay. What do you want?
So I will add his condition to my, as stated, to my motion on the resolution.
And as part of that condition is, with Bart's request, the, that they be provided the report?
Or be available to them.
Or make, be available, okay?
I think so. Okay, we have a motion with the condition of 31 for noise? Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to new business and immediately discuss, I think Commissioner Smith's fine idea for the neighborhood of entertaining a straw vote, I think, to encourage the city engineer, city engineer in the neighborhood to address the city's, the neighborhood's circulation issues. Is that appropriate type of a motion to make?
Do you need a second?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We're all second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion by Brown, second by Tally, and passes 7-0, that city staff make every effort possible to provide outreach to the neighborhood for their traffic circulation issues.
Thanks for the good idea.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's any old business, any reports of commissioners, of staffs or meetings, anything? We certainly have a layout of our future before us by the city planner.
I knew what was coming up.
From a wonderful study session tonight. And so, if anything, I'll get with you, and we, if we need to start planning an additional meeting, knowing the schedule for the, for the housing element, if we need an additional meeting to handle other conditional use permits and other things that are in process that the city, our residents need to have processed, well, we'll, let's see if we need to, your staff budget and our availability, if we can make all that happen, if, if required. Okay, with that, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to the Planning Commission's study session meeting to be held at 6 o'clock PM on August 16, 2017, in Council Chambers at City Hall located at 100 Avenida Presidio, San Clemente, California.
Motion by Commissioner Tally, you have a second? Second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 7-0. Thanks, Mal, for your help tonight.
I thought my motion was...
Yeah, good.